...meetings of the school year. May I have a motion of this? Will Paulson speak?
Dr. Corleone? Mr. Brown? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Rowland? Ms. Nowey? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Paulson.
This evening, after the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask everyone to remain standing for a moment in honor and memory of Sam Kelly and Leon Badges and their tragic loss. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our hearts go out to the families. Mr. Davis, the reading of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law. State, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public for the max notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting marriage is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montclair Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. The listed meetings may pose in the Montclair Municipal Building, all Montclair Public Schools, Montclair Public Library, Montclair Township Board of Education and Ministry of Office Building, Montclair Public School Website, and at the time of the delivery.
This would normally be the time in the meeting where our high school representatives report unless somebody else from high school. No, just kidding, just kidding. I would assume that they're home this evening preparing their speeches for graduation. We have a wonderful year of great representation and look forward to that in the upcoming fall with our next two representatives. Dr. Rothar, super encourage, report, please.
Yes, just briefly. This is one of the most exciting times of the year. We are celebrating, celebrating, celebrating promotions, graduations this week. Working forward to congratulating the students on a wonderful year of academic achievement. I just wanted to thank all of the administrators, the faculty, and the staff for all of their hard work over the course of the year. It seems to pass very quickly. When we think back, September doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but it has been a very good year in the district. And it's as a result of the joint efforts of all of those people who really do make a difference every day. I just wanted to comment on the Montclair organization. It is now officially a standalone by the one C three organization. The new board of directors have taken over. And, you know, I know they won't be off doing great things, continuing the mission of the organization as they move forward. I did provide a summary to the board. We are required twice a year to report on our incidents of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So the information that I provided to the board for this meeting reflects the first reporting period of the year, which actually ran from July 1st, 2015, through December 31st. We had 11 incidents of violence, one incident of vandalism, one incident involving a weapon. That was actually the possession of a knife at the high school. Five instances of substance abuse and five substantiated cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, as I said, we do report that information twice a year. I don't know if anyone had any questions about that information. Okay. I am very excited that we have a number of presentations tonight. I guess we'll start off with the Eagle Scout recognition. And this sort of doing things in a little bit of a different way, because typically we recognize the scouts sometime before their port of honor. And in this case, our scouts have already received their resolutions from the Board of Education. I don't know if you want to, you know, call them up and make sure that we do recognize you, you know, in front of the board and give the board an opportunity to congratulate you.
Well, first of all, I just want to say congratulations to the two of you, Jenks and David. This is obviously something you've both been working on for quite some time. Recognizing full well that it takes 21 merit badges and who knows how many more. And I'd like you to comment on that when you come up to in front of us. But only 5% of all Boy Scouts actually get to this level. So we congratulate you first for that. Also, typically, we do hand out resolutions. Jenks, I see you have yours if you want to come on up front. And David, do you have yours? Just like, please come on up front. How long have you been working as a Boy Scout? How many years?
Well, actually, I've been a Club Scout since I was a boy. Two Boy Scouts since.
And tell a story about your project.
So for my project, I worked on the trail system that's located behind the Township Park and the Town Library. And so what my project involved was moving fallen bricks as well as a lot of different things that have moved away on the trail over the years. Re marking the trails, actually revaluing a few sections of trail that were no longer usable to run in that area. Fixing part of the bridge on the trail system. Got a broken board. And cleaning the block of garbage that was also clearly on the trail system.
Sounds great, a big work project.
So there's a park named Montelaw off of Jane Creek, a part of the Dantry family. So I ditched their land with my friend. And it was very inconvenient to ditch there because the banks were very captured with a lot of bushes and trees that would really just catch your line. So my project was to clear the bank. And I also added a mulch platform to plant out the area. And I also worked on the town sign there. The town sign was had one post. And the tree roots were kind of a mean sign. So I added a second post to stabilize the sign. And I also, well, I didn't paint the sign, but I obviously organized that as well.
How long did it take you to do, to publish your project?
I probably started planning my project about several months ago, a year ago from March of '04. And it lasted until through September. So I put a lot into it. And planning my project was a lot of work. There's a lot of planning that's been important. David, I started with ideas that during the summer going into senior year. And a lot of it was, some of it were very vicious. So it took a while. But it ended up being six months.
Thanks for that. Congratulations. What are you doing next year? Are you headed off to?
I'm going to Williams College in Massachusetts.
Fantastic.
I'm going to Austin College.
That's good. Congratulations. We typically read the resolutions and pass them out, but as the boys have already received them, I figured we'd bypass that. But the one thing I did want to say is that behind every Eagle Scout, there's a family, parents, relatives, that are there for support and help. And to the families, to the parents, this is in part your award too. And congratulations to you for raising such wonderful young men.
Okay, at this point, I would like to turn things over to Dr. Schwartz and have you introduce our presenters with regard to the molecular biology.
We are really, really proud of the work that our students have done. The program is Research in Molecular Biology. Our students competed. The proteins were published. And it sounds like it to kind of listen to their own presenting.
Hi, I'm Cassie Gollworski.
Hi, I'm Kelvin Lee.
And over the summer, Kelvin and I went to the Watson Institute of Microbiology at Rutgers and we stopped studying with professors in a lab setting and in a classroom in a lecture setting to learn a lot of new biotechnology that's very important to current biological sciences.
So what our project was, was we're studying duckweed, which is a water plant. And using techniques such as PCR and restriction digest, we can take pieces of DNA from the duckweed, turn it into DNA, put it into the coli bacteria, and continue to study the DNA from duckweed using the bacteria.
So the purpose of studying this DNA is to figure out what proteins the birds were and to figure out how these proteins can be applied on a practical scale to help us solve other problems.
So duckweed actually grows very fast and accumulates starch very fast. So it has potential in bioremediation, which is the take of a potential substance in water and for biofuel because it creates a lot of high energy molecules.
So we conducted this research over the summer at the Watson Institute. And then after Kelvin and I worked with, we got to work with Professor Bershon, Dr. Jenna Lee, and Mr. Roy over the summer. We used algorithms that they use that are used in the real scientific world and use a lot of lab techniques, like we said, PCR, restriction digest. And then during last September, we brought this knowledge back to the classroom in our class of research in molecular biology office.
So this year, we had 12 students in total in our class. And we helped them, Cassie and I helped them through the different techniques that we used at the laboratory at Rutgers. And we actually performed the same set of procedures where we were.
Okay, so first, what we started with was Rutgers took DNA from duckweed and they inserted it into bacteria. They then release bacteria on a plate and gave it to our school.
So then, using blue-eyed selection, we choose the white colonies and let them grow. So what Rutgers does is they use a plasmid which uses a certain piece of DNA and they put it inside of the bacteria. And there's also a little piece of DNA from duckweed that we have to put in. So using blue-eyed selection, we can see if the plasmid is in the bacteria and the DNA from duckweed is actually in the bacteria we're studying.
So in summary, we have a method of choosing which bacteria has the DNA insert from duckweed. And what we do is we throw this bacteria. So we have a lot of samples of the DNA so that we can run different experiments on it. And the experiments that we do first are to test the length and the density of the DNA.
So that's the job of PCR and restriction digest. So PCR just takes the DNA from duckweed and replicates it many times. And then we can figure out the length of this DNA using gel electrophoresis. So we take this DNA and then we take, put it in a gel. And then we put it to charges. And because DNA is actually charged, we will actually move towards one end of the piece of our solid gel. And depending on the size, it'll be different. So that way we determine the size and length of the DNA.
So the longer you insert, the farther it'll, the shorter the insert, the farther it'll travel down the gel. So if it's at the very top of the gel, we know that it's a very long insert. And if it's at the very bottom, we know it's a short insert.
And then using restriction digest, we can also try to determine how much DNA we actually have. So we take the DNA and we cut it up using enzymes. And then we can use, getting chromatose to stain the DNA. And based on brightness in pictures, we can try to see how much DNA there actually is in our cell.
So after we find the length and density, if we find that we have a sufficient length, that has to be at least 300 base pairs. And if we find that the DNA is dense enough, we can then send it to Rutgers to be sequenced. And what Rutgers does is something called sequence sequencing, which basically gives us the new bootpath sequence of the DNA, the A, C, T, and G that makes up the sequence.
And then using this knowledge, we can actually go to NCPI and use algorithms used by real scientists around the world. And using their database that they've actually made, search if other organisms and other proteins like our, that are in our sequence have been found by other scientists.
So after doing all this analysis, we discovered our protein was LHC2 by our system complex. So using the different algorithms, we're able to find the structure of our protein, which is depicted here. We were able to find certain important parts of our protein. For example, here you can see the alpha fields and the beta sheets. We discovered a lot of important things about this protein. For example, it's potentially used in harvesting light emission lights, which is important in the use of light in figuring everything we do.
And after we found out all this information, we come together, do a symposium in our school and then with other schools that also do programs at Rutgers. And then we share our knowledge and then we get, so we can learn from other people's research and actually get a lot of information from professors and graduates who actually do this type of research.
It was actually very interesting. On June 6th, we've had two Rutgers and we got to talk with a lot of people who actually work in this field and they know a lot about it. We had some very interesting conversations with them. And I think what's interesting about this program is that Kelvin and I and all the other students in our class are actually published on NCPI. So if you go on NCPI, you can see where our sequences and our research are all published under our names. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Do you guys have any questions?
Where do we begin? You guys are amazing.
That was, the two of you worked so well together, too. That was just a fabulous presentation. Thank you so much.
Oh, let me thank Slime Sign.
And this is.
Oh, Dr. Bershon.
Dr. Lee.
Mr. Palletta.
And Mr. Burke.
And probably some of our research. And down with the future is Melvin, who, through her program at Rutgers that's connected to the Watson Institute program, actually had a model of this protein printed.
So, yeah, as Cassie said, I went to Rutgers University and they taught me time. And I took, I used my research and wrote in my research code for, and I made a protein or a 3D printed model of it. So this is just a protein that's got this place in my book in progress synthesis. So this was how that work is. I went there a couple of times and we worked with, I worked with Dr. Bershon. And at the high school, we started creating 3D models with Mr. Bogdan. And hopefully, by next year, we can, like, all the students can create a model of that.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your experience. But I do think it's wonderful that the opportunity some of these students have to interact with folks engaged in some areas of academic research and the fact that they can bring that experience back to their classmates and be published.
Especially the collegiate experience.
That's fantastic.
Fantastic for high school students. Thank you, Dr. Schwartz.
Oh, Dr. Schwartz, your earring fell. Did you get it?
I did.
I saw it though.
I just love the research program we have here and the fact that it allows, typical high school students to do such atypical things and just elevate themselves to the higher level. It's opportunities and I wish all students would avail themselves of it. And like I said, although it's high school, you get out what you put into it.
Okay, I would now like to turn things over to Mr. Tutz. If you could introduce our next student presenters.
Sure, I'm excited to bring to another film club who have a award-winning winning film, Shapeshifter. And this is, I think, a great example of what students really take their interest and passion to the fore of what they can achieve. So I'll introduce Zach Belisi, who will talk a little bit about who has proved the actual film and making of it. And then we'll actually share with you a lot of the results. Zach?
Hi, my name is Zach Belisi. I'm the president and the founder of the school's film club. What I wanted to do when I created this club was I wanted to take an outlet where students could follow their passion of film and express themselves creatively in a manner that was provided by me. So what we do in the club was I would take a couple of weeks to teach the students how to use the cameras, how to use the editing equipment, how to write a script through the software and build on it. And what I would do by the end of that was then I would assign a script. I would say, if you guys could get me a three-page script with three to five characters that takes place in a high school by email at midnight on Saturday. And so what they would do is they would send me their scripts and I would pick three. And then by the next meeting, all the members of the club would have specific jobs. And we would film that week and then we would edit the next week and then we watched them. So what we did for this movie was, the idea was three to five characters that take place in the high school. It was five pages long and it was written by our student, one of our members named Daryl. He's the gentleman with the long hair. And what we would do is we filmed it. And then finally, it was time to submit films into the Montclair Film Festival, where I submitted five of our films. It would be 12 this year. I submitted five of them that I thought were the best genres for the festival. And this one was selected as a winner. So we got to attend the film festival and this film was screened at the Wellmont Theater in Montclair. So.
I'd just like to thank, actually, Zach personally. Where's mine? I'd just like to thank Zach personally. Like he said, he's the founder of this club and he really built it up from the ground up. He's done a lot for us, members of the film club. You know, I've gotten so much out of it this year and just the ability to express myself and to learn so much about film. It's a big passion of mine. And Zach's done, you know, Zach's done a lot for us. And hopefully, you can see the results. You know, if you look at the films made at the beginning of the year, they were like movies you'd make and see for like a couple of kids with a movie. It's like a home movie. But towards the end of the year, you have movies like this with real production values, real story, real plot development. And just, you know, the path that Zach took us down, which is really appreciate him doing that for us.
Yo, Daryl, anyone home?
Sorry, man, it's kind of so down.
Dude, you've let that girl since freshman year. We're seniors now. Ask her out.
It's not that easy, man. Like, what if she has to throw it at me? What if I get rejected?
Just do it, man. What do you got to lose?
I don't know, man. I just get so nervous when I'm out there.
Trust me, it's safe.
Thanks, I guess. What is this? Shapeshifter? Um, okay, I choose Heather. What the, this thing actually worked.
Oh, Jack. Hey, I look cute today.
Ew, no, it's Daryl. The thing actually worked.
I can see that. Why haven't it?
Do you know she's Sam's best friend? Perfect opportunity for me to get information.
I guess it makes sense. We have to change your voice, though. Still sound like yourself.
How's the sound?
Much better.
Hey, Heather. Hey, Jack. Uh, do you want to come to my locker? I have to get my lunch.
Yeah, bro, I mean, sure. Yeah, let's go. See you, Jack.
See you.
You look cute in that. But anyways, you want Jack now? How's that going?
Oh, no, no, we're just friends.
Yeah, okay, just friends.
All right, all right. What about you? Any guys you're hoping to ask your mom?
Well, there's this one guy like in my homeroom.
Oh, really? Yes.
Tell me. Hell, no, I'm not going to tell you. It's going to be a repeat of fifth grade.
Whatever you say.
Wait, wait, fine, I'll tell you. It's a kid named Daryl.
Can you leave this kid like soon? You should try talking to him.
No, I doubt it. I'm too shy to talk to him anyways. Uh, Heather, you okay?
Yeah, I just need to go to the bathroom quick.
Sure, what's the boss? I'll call Jack and let him know what happened.
Okay, bro, seriously, you gotta do it now. You know she likes, just ask her out.
All right, man, all right. Scare her out back, brother. I'll go and scare her right now.
Look.
Oh, hi.
Hi. I was wondering if you'd like to go out with me?
Um, I'd love to, but I'm done with Heather.
That was wonderful. And congra- And congratulations on your award. And thank you for coming tonight so we could not only see your film, but see the folks who are behind it. And I know there'll be other great things coming forward from the Film Club in the future, I'm sure.
How many students are in the Film Club at this point?
Uh, about four.
Wow. And this was your conception, Zach?
Yeah, we're still, we're still an unofficial club. So, yeah, we have, we're not, we're not funded. We're an unofficial club, just run, be on Tuesdays, and we're all on our own.
Wonderful job. I did a little bit of research. I see the Montclair Film Festival's been around for five years. Can you speak to the award that you won?
Uh, we won the special jury prize. We won the special jury prize for the visionary section, which is the older, the oldest kids.
Great job. Great job. Are you, are most of the students sophomores, seniors, juniors?
Uh, most of them are underclassmen, so we have a good amount of freshmen.
Are you a senior?
I'm a senior, yeah. Today was my last meeting.
Where are you going next year?
I'm going to American University in Washington.
And are you going to study film?
I'm going to study journalism, but I don't do that.
As a journalist, that's fun. Well, congratulations to the three of you. Thank you so much for being here. Film was an excellent.
Thank you.
I'm really glad to have an opportunity to watch you come tonight.
They'll all be available on YouTube.
Yeah, I've seen them already. Mine was my second viewing.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Great. We also had our showcase那次. I believe we showed all of it in Auditory. It was like the Oscars. I don't know if it's the Oscars. It's the Oscars in my head.
When was that?
Uh, it was in May.
During school?
Uh, it was after school, at, at night in the auditorium.
Oh, next year's and the board can take you.
Yes, exactly.
We need to know about these things.
Well, you won't be here. It was in the town.
Okay, so, next year.
Yes, next year you're going to be there.
We'll be there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, just an observation. I mean, this is the juxtaposition of having students who are working on original science stuff in molecular biology, right? Research, creation, and then on the other side, we have our artists creating film. I mean, what a breadth of talent at high school. It's really just, it's wonderful. As a Board of Education, it's just wonderful to see that, you know, different, different levels of involvement of students and different, their, their competency in these areas. It's just great.
Right. And Karen, you pretty much took the words out of my mouth. Great project, fantastic. Yeah, nothing else, don't say it's going to reflect itself in a PARC score, an SAT score, an ACTT score. You know what? That doesn't make it any less important. Just as a district, as a community, as a, as, as a nation, we just have to maintain our competence about the fact that we can't get into the rut of sacrificing the arts every time we think something needs to be cut because the arts are fantastic things, they're important, they are an integral part of creative life, and I think this is manifestation of it.
Moving on, actually, I, I did want to mention a, not necessarily a film in its own right, but if you take a look at the Good News and Progress in our schools, and there's so many wonderful items, the last item is a Woodmont YouTube video. And I might recommend to everybody to take a look at that. It's got the YouTube web address listed right there.
You've done it again.
As, as we move along to Business Administrator Report.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. So, I wanted to brief the board. We've been on some construction projects, so we've been looking at a proposed, possible proposed referendum for all of our buildings. And that's, that's usually a long, a big, long process. So we still haven't actually decided on an actual referendum date, but we have started working with the, our architects with that, superintendent, myself, and the facilities managers, Steve Thug. We do have some construction projects, however, that we are going to move forward this summer, you know, out of necessity more than anything else. We're going to do some, some basic repairs at one of the school, elementary school roofs. We're also looking to do an initiative at the middle school in terms of improving the front area there for bus block. This is a project that's actually been discussed for a number of years. We did put in the budget, that's something we feel we can move forward with now as an emergent issue. Instead of waiting for a referendum, we put together it and it stopped.
I'm sorry, Jim. Is that done?
We're looking at, do something with the bus lanes over at the middle school. I'm sorry, I slanted into the microphone. We've actually discussed this for some time, I believe, and we feel we really got to move forward with that because it's not a situation that's improving over time, it's only getting worse. So like I said, we're going to be doing some repairs to the, one of the elementary school roofs and the bus park are the two biggest ones on the street right now. That's basically it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
I sent an email to Renee. I'd like to schedule a communications committee meeting. Those members just look for an email. Renee's going to try and pin down Maranelle to the technical meeting.
That sounds good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Bellevue's liaisons? PTC liaisons? Until it's the end of the school year? No negotiations, any additional reports? Public participation? Any, anyone would like to speak to items on the agenda?
May I add something that Dr. Brokter brought up, if it's not on the agenda?
No, I can wait.
I'll do the, Terry and Boheding, Free Southern Drive, and Parker. My issue is on the agenda. So Mr. Tevis mentioned a referendum, so it looks like we're moving forward towards that, but we don't have a date. Any ideas on that? I've heard that sometimes in your org, you do something to passage.
Yeah, there's actually, there's only, we're restricted to a few actual dates that are set by statute. September being one, December, January, I believe another one in April, March, thank you for that. So we're at the point where we feel it would be very tight for us to make the next referendum date, which would be September. We just wouldn't be able to make that one. We meet all the deadlines that were required by the state for submissions of our applications. So the next viable one would be December of 2016. So we've discussed, we've been discussing and we're moving forward towards that date, but we're not sure if we're going to be able to make that date. Now, we, there's a lot of paperwork that the state requires, if you will. So again, board is now discussing further, we have facilities and finance committee coming up in the next few weeks, actually, that we're going to be scheduling, we'll be discussing the next potential referendum they try to set down a stone. Then we'll probably report on that the next quarter.
Sounds great. And also, if you wouldn't mind telling me a little more about the Lazard project in the front area regarding the bus club?
No, no problem. We're looking to take out, bring out, as in the front, as you know, I'm sure, there's a grassy median area that's, that's going to be removed so that we can make that one big pavement section, if you will. And then there's, I don't have the exact plans in front of me, but the idea is to make it more accessible for buses.
Right, because you have five buses that go on the side of the door, as you're aware. So that's going to get rid of that? Is that the goal?
I'm not sure if they're going to get rid of it altogether. I just know that, I mean, the parking will be gone during the bus stop, that's for sure. So we want to have any cars there so we can have an easier flow for the buses into an exit. Because they, they bind up in there because it's so tight, as you can imagine. Again, I don't have the exact specifications in front of me, but the whole idea is to improve that, the entrance and exit of those buses.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, listen, I know for Hillcrest Road to Lockup, as a resident, I just wanted to know why the legal fees are so high?
Oh, my concern, that question? Yeah, I, well, the legal fees are, the resolutions on the agenda has to do with the average of the legal fees because the state does that calculation every year. Our expenses are a little bit above. The resolution is actually on there in, in terms of the Q-SAC monitoring, which currently takes place every three years. So the department has on record the fact that the district has put into place a cap on legal expenses to, to control that. So the, the resolution is really memorializing in a very public way the fact that we, we do have that cap. Some of our legal expenses are really beyond our control. When folks file a lawsuit against the Board of Education, you know, we really can't control that. So some of those types of items actually kind of drive those higher costs. We've had a number of them over the past several years, even engaging in the process that was kind of forced on us in terms of the JC, P&amp;L towers. Certainly, we did not fight that, but, you know, there are legal expenses associated with that. So, you know, those kinds of things that we had, occur, really have kind of driven our costs up, and we do have a cap in place to manage it.
Any other questions or items on the agenda, same as there is none? Moving forward, do I have a motion, please?
Sorry.
That was missed right there.
Are you a shapeshifter, Karen? You didn't see the film?
So, I'm here. Item, item I, as we move forward through the agenda, item I minutes, any comments or questions? Item J, any comments or questions?
I would like to comment on J3.
Yes, Karen.
And I would specifically like to thank Renee because, I mean, this is her resolution as she saw it, righted. And I think it's really an excellent and concise representation of how the board feels about this issue. So thank you, Renee. I think you captured our sentiments very precisely.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't here during the discussion, I guess during the last meeting, but I fully endorse and fully support her. I want to thank Renee also. And just parenthetically, they say that everyone's going to have to pass the PARC to graduation, and I went to the statewide pass rate this year on the PARC for high school. So, I know, you might not know the exact figure, but it's certainly not anything even remotely close to 100%. So, I mean, you're, again, the vibe you've got is realistic, is when the president, about 16 years ago, said, "By the year 2014, we're going to have 100% proficiency rate at high schools." But what can you do, Billy? Doesn't, doesn't do anything except let everyone know how you feel about it, unfortunately.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments? Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Cordellino said. When this was, this, this concept was brought forth, we had a couple of different ideas on the table. And Dr. Brokter, you very succinctly put what we cared most about on paper into this resolution and really made it easy for us to accept something going forward collectively as a group. So I just want to thank you for your work on that. Item K, any comments or questions? I'm sorry?
J3.
J3.
I don't believe that the resolution, the last paragraph, has, has a copy being sent to our local representatives. So I'm wondering, can I make a motion?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes. We'll make sure that they're all included. So Penatchia, Boyer, Frunch, and Rylan Heisen? Rylan Heisen is the US Congress.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get our local representatives, not this case as well.
Your vote comes out, thank you.
Do, do, right here, what should we do?
No, same will, duly noted.
I, I did want to mention that there is an addendum that just came our way. And look at, look at that in a moment, too. Go ahead.
Apologies, I didn't answer the board sooner. We have a last minute request that came in, I believe just this morning, actually, on the donation that you see. So we thought we would, maybe get that off for the, for the meeting. It actually had to do with, I believe, thank the jury for this, from the senior awards, it already happens. We wanted to get the check deposited, obviously, and, and approved. The last item, the second item there is a use of facilities request that came to me just yesterday. It's a resident in town who's, owns a business TV production, so he'll actually be paying to use it, so it's nice to have it coming. I discussed it with the superintendent. I was comfortable, I vetted him on what the film is, and it's, he's picking a commercial, and the commercial's about hospitals, so it's not a horror slash or film or anything like that. There won't be any children present in the building, including the commercial, of the act of the fact. So again, I would, I would recommend a use of facility request.
Thank you, Mr. Tevis. Moving forward, I just want to make sure, item K, any comments or questions? Item L? Item M? Any comments or questions?
About K?
I said K. But you want to go back to K?
I do.
Dr. Cordellino, do you have a comment or question about something in K?
No, I just, it's, I see K6 as the construction closeout media center, a major project.
Yes.
So I just wanted to offer, as we close out this project, well, congratulations to the committee, the architects, and the design consultants, the high school staff, and the administration. Your job well done. And I think Renee, you had let us know that not only do we think that our media center is beautiful and wonderful, but that it's been selected to appear as an outstanding design in the 2016 American School and University Educational Interiors Showcase, and it'll appear in the August issue. So congratulations to everybody, and welcome.
Moving forward, item L, any comments or questions? Item M?
Very good example today.
And as we move to page 35 of 37, item N? Item L? Let's not forget the addendum that was handed to us, and we'll call this.
Mr. Newey? Mr. Rock?
I'm staying on minutes, yes, and everything else.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes, it says I'm staying on K1, X number 82287.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Moudra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
I'm staying on the minutes, yes, and everything else.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Any old business? Any general board comments or new business?
Um, Matt, you, you and I and Renee attended the retirement dinner on the NCBI. And it's always a wonderful affair, and what strikes me every year is how our teachers say they're going to miss the kids. And I think that says a lot about our teachers. I know it's hard, especially for the high school teachers, to be up at dawn every day, make it into a very early schedule, and hard for Lazard teachers to get out a little bit later than everybody else. But it, it just kind of warms my heart to hear them say that it's the kids that they're going to miss.
gonna miss, and I think it just really speaks to who teachers are and what they do. So, I wanted to just say that publicly, to let them know their words, they can go on notice.
Actually, Karen, one of the teachers that made that comment actually was choked up. He was missing the kids so much. And the feeling of camaraderie and a sense of concern and care for the students would just fill the room. It was just such a wonderful event to go to, and honest, after being there, what was it, this past Wednesday? I look forward, well, I don't look forward to next year, because hopefully nobody will be retiring, but if individuals decide to do so, I look forward to being there next year. Mike, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I went to a number of the things this year, senior practice, senior awards, NHS, and I'll just say, just as a general comment, I'm just, I heard a lot of feedback from individuals, particularly with the part of the NHS ceremonies and the senior awards, that they were just absolutely seamlessly run. They moved, there's no drag time, is where it up, well organized, and I just want to share those compliments I heard.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I too went to senior awards, a senior sports banquet, which was, both were so enjoyable to be at, wonderful to see the accomplishments of the students, the retirement party. Renee and I had the opportunity to go to the valedictorian, salutatorian dinner for Morris County with our valedictorian, Rachel, and Stacy, the salutatorian, and that was just a wonderful event as well. So, it's a great time of the year. Looking forward to good weather Wednesday and Thursday for the final events of the school year. Any other?
Actually, Matt, on that note, I could withdraw on my DAC hat with project, with graduation, but it's project graduation, and I just want to remind you all that you, of course, invited to join the celebrations this year and check hands out at the JCC in West Orange, like you're on. The DAC is still looking for some volunteers, particularly that I would covet 2:00 AM before I go to shift, so, otherwise, please stop on by, we look forward to sharing that with you.
Can I offer Mr. Morrell for that?
I think we should offer Charlie, he's not here.
Matt, I also wanted to comment, I know the night that you were at the Vassal Dinner was the night of the Fourth Annual Science Research Symposium, so I just wanted to comment about that, and just to say that, once again, these kids are absolutely awe inspiring. They're just, they have so much ways and knowledge, and so professional and articulate. It's just, it's something amazing to watch, just as board members, we're just so proud of them and the kind of work that they're doing. Really groundbreaking work. They're doing things with tissue replacement and just amazing stuff, and we're really proud of them. I was a little concerned about, there were only seven rising sophomores for the program next year. Is that true?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No. It's more like 12.
I can, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly find that out. And also, if we, is that a normal number of 12? Is that the typical number? Just curious, I'm just curious where the program, I just want to make sure this program lives, because it's an amazing program. So, if you could follow up? Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Public participation, does anybody have a comment?
Teri, I'm wondering again, Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "It is better to light one candle than to curse the darkness." As a parent, I would like to thank Dr. Roktar for lighting that one candle and forming the One Month No Committee. Ever since she faced a standing room only crowd at her first board event meeting last July, she has been tireless and creative in helping our community work towards more acceptance and appreciation of our diversity. We appreciate it, Dr. Roktar.
Here, Matt, you have it.
Any other public comments, seeing as there is none, I'd like a motion to close?
I will. Please, second one, thank you.